All right, I call this meeting to order at six o'clock on Wednesday, October twenty fifth. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Yes, we just, we're here.
I make a motion to approve it.
All right, yeah, all those in favor of going ahead and calling this meeting to order, say aye.
Aye.
Sasha, can you do a roll call for us?
Chairperson Wendy Prendel?
Here.
Commissioner Sandy Kewch?
Here.
Member Shannon Lee?
Here.
Member Todd Lane?
Present.
Member Lori Rafferty?
Here.
Member Julie Mizak?
Here.
Mayor Rick Cole? Nope. Mayor Pro Tem Trevor Smith?
Nope.
Yeah. Director Andrew Lowery?
Here.
Town Administrator Kim Boyd?
Present.
Attorney Ruth Borne?
Sheenah?
Town Clerk? And? Board Member Kennedy?
That'd be me.
Here.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments for this evening? Doesn't appear so, so let's go ahead and move on to consent items. Approval of agenda with a couple of changes in new business, removing the introduction of Catherine Malinsky, removal of impact fees in item C, and addition of adding voting to have a co-chair. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those adjustments?
I so moved.
All right. Do I have a first? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then approval of minutes from October eleventh of two thousand and twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve it because I already read it.
All right.
I read it at home.
I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October eleventh meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Minutes for October eleventh have been approved. So it's on down, please. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and let's find us a co-chair or a vice chair for this joint planning commission and variance committee meeting. Anybody want to take up the mantle as vice chair?
I nominate Todd Lane.
I nominate Todd Lane too.
What are you not ready?
I said that nomination.
It's up to you to say yes.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Two nominations in a second, there you go.
I think his laundry, if he knows what's different.
He's feeding too, right? Keep his house clean.
He'll do a good job.
Very good.
Yeah. So we have a first and a second, a nomination for Todd. Todd, is that something that you're willing to take on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm just not that familiar with it.
That's okay.
That's the only reason. I have no problem with it. I just not that familiar with it.
We're all learning with you.
It's okay.
That's it.
And I'm not a good candidate because my work takes me out of town.
Too many times.
Minimum once a month, yeah.
You're a fast learner. And after twenty-something years, piece of cake. So Todd has, we have a first, second. All those in favor of having Todd as our vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your mom could be co-chair.
And you probably get to be a co-chair.
She has to live with him.
All right, let's go ahead and move to zoning code subdivisions.
So I'm gonna apologize in advance because tonight, I think, is the most torturous review of the code we've had. Because as you get close to the end, then you start to pick up where the conflicts exist. And so you guys have been really patient and helpful so far, but I'm just warning you, it might be a little painful this evening. So I'm gonna try to make it quick and as painless as possible, but I did have to start over with part one, even though we've visited with this frequently. But so the first edition is defining a recreational vehicle, which is under ours. So that gets us, you know, to page fourteen. And I am interested to get your input about this. We're gonna talk a lot, unfortunately, about mobile home parks tonight and recreational vehicles. So.
Is it the green?
Yeah, that's green.
Okay.
So I tried to make it obvious for everyone to, if you have color copies, and for me to get through it quicker with you guys. One part of this definition that's kind of interesting is, you know, when it's occupied, so if somebody's living in it, our ability to tell them, you know, they really can't continue to park in town unlawfully. I thought that was important to add. Everyone might have a different opinion about this, so I don't know how much this goes on in town, but it can, in fact, be a big problem.
Can be.
So are you asking if we need to put like a time string on it? Is that what you're?
No, I'm just making sure everybody's come comfortable with, you know, you'll see as we go through tonight, how we're gonna regulate recreational vehicles and how that interfaces with the mobile home park and some of the conflicts in our code that I'm trying to clean up.
Okay, so for like trailers that are like fifth wheels or something that's in the mobile home or in the mobile home? Okay.
Yeah. Like, let's say they're parked, I don't know, on someone's private property, then they're not gonna be permitted. A fifth wheel, right? Because it needs to be installed and so on.
Should occupied recre- recreational vehicle be its own definition?
It can, but then it's gonna end up under the O's. So it might get lost. That's the only reason I included it there. I thought about that.
Can you do a, can you do a little bit more separation when you type it up like a?
Well, I can make it like another paragraph like this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just so it stands out a little bit more.
Yep, I can do that. So, you know, we really don't have a permitted use for RV park in the town. It's all SRUs, as if you guys remember going through all those.
So we have a occupied definition. Does that match occupied recreational vehicle, like?
What did you hear?
No, that's what they were just talking about, because the recreational vehicle will get lost.
No, she's asking if, Lori is asking if the definition of occupied needs to match the definition of occupied recreational vehicle or kind of mesh somehow.
Or, or be, I mean, be the same or what, I mean, close to the same.
Right here, Julie. Three pages back.
Three pages back.
On page eleven, actually, because ten of thirty is.
Is that what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
Right there, Bill, or Todd, in the middle, right here. At the bottom, it's not highlighted.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's, if it's not highlighted, that means it's our existing town code.
Right, but just that it match, I mean, that it doesn't contradict occupied in the recreational vehicle also.
Yeah, I don't think it does. Occupied RV is, is somebody actually living in it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm. To be built. I know, but here, but here says occupied, but here. I mean, I guess. I feel like this occupied should also kind of match that, but it was open by then, I don't care.
But a lot of times, I mean, I bet we use the word occupied in definitions and in the municipal code a thousand times.
And they can mean very.
Yeah, like I'm looking at substantial improvement right now as I'm scrolling through and it says, oh, before damages that's occurred, but anyway.
Yeah, because if you.
It needs to be really generic occupied, right? Just think about.
Make this correct. Okay, they can be two separate things.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Are we comfortable? Or I can look at a more specific definition if you guys want.
I'm comfortable if everybody is.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
Okay, so then we're gonna go then to our zoning district definitions. And that's approximately on page twenty-two. I believe you guys have a green highlighted version here too, where we have our mobile home park district.
Yeah.
And this is where I got in trouble last night mostly.
Looks like that.
So the town code says you can have a mobile home park that is two acres. And I was using a definition that meant, you know, it was a minimum of ten acres, which is essentially.
Right there, low home, there we go.
I don't have an opinion. I'm looking for all of you to weigh in on that. If the town wants to see somebody come in potentially and put in two mobile homes and call it a mobile home park and be able to go through the zoning process to do so.
I could do that at my house. And almost two acres.
No.
But, but town is.
Here's, there's one more thing, and this is, the two acres is what the town's had for a long time. So I'm not trying to upset the apple cart. We can you work with that. I just want everybody to understand that's still viable in the town, and if you want to encourage that type of land use, we can keep it to two acres. It's not a big deal.
Why, why is the state ten acres on this paper?
Because there's other provisions where we had started to expand that definition, so the ten acres would go away and the two acres would stay in the code.
I don't, I don't understand where you're getting two acres. I'm reading this and it says two mobile homes or more manufactured homes or two or more mobile homes or, it doesn't say two acres anywhere on this.
So is there a definition someplace that we're not seeing?
And so as we go further.
And that's one of the things she said is, there's lots of different bits and pieces, and so. Do you guys?
I can show you where the complexity is.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go to page twenty-five, where we did our development standards.
Okay, the non-residential ones? The non-residential.
Parks and residential.
My bad.
We have a minimum size of thirty-five hundred square feet. So not even sure. This is part of the.
Our minimum. Thank you, Rick.
And then I'm trying to make this as simple, and so the front yard setback in the code is twenty feet and we were doing twenty-five feet. The side yards are ten, they're consistent from the proposed revisions and the existing town code. The fences, we were looking at six feet, the town code says four feet all, all around. So that's one issue we need to decide tonight. Do we go back to the existing town code? Which is the front yard setback of twenty feet and fences is at four feet.
Considering it's supposed to be a high, higher density, the, you know, smaller actually makes sense, but what do you, I mean.
I don't have an opinion. I honestly don't. I just don't want to create more problems for everybody if it's not consistent.
I think smaller setback is acceptable for a mobile home park.
Yeah, with that close to your neighbors in a mobile home.
So can you keep it at twenty?
Yes.
Okay, and then the fence height aside six feet, so four feet is kind of low, but you guys might have an opinion about that.
In, well, usually if you think about mobile home parks, it could be shorter term. Six-foot fence is a pain in the, to up and down and all around. Four foots are a little bit easier because usually that's gonna be looking at a seam length. And four foot is what we've had. Ruth?
Yes. Yeah, that's what the town code currently says.
Okay.
And I'll show you where that is as we go through. So, and we can go back to this, I'm just I, it's a lot to. Okay, so now we go down to development standards. This is where you're gonna see it.
Hey, Ruth?
Yep.
So somebody had mentioned that they believe in the state of Colorado, it states in mobile home parks that your fences can only be four feet.
And we'll tell you, we gave a variance to somebody over there that mobile home park with six foot fence into a
Looking that up.
Cool, and I can see that.
Rose, it's Harry Howard. And, and I'm the one that mentioned that. I know any mobile home park I've lived in, which has only been two, but the standard in Denver is they can only be Denver metro, I should say. They can only be four foot tall, and in our lease agreements over here at youth village, they can only be four foot tall.
Do you think that's a good height for dogs and not to jump over?
Yeah, in the trailer park, they have to keep them in, and ninety percent of them don't even allow it.
Don't allow what? Dogs?
I've never lived in more than six.
Okay, well, just look at the Colorado code briefly, and I don't see it. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Fences, manufacturer terms, let's see this.
No, I can see. I would like my privacy to be six foot, but I could see where it'd be a pretty box for smaller rods. And you can have a lot of jump buildup in the same.
You got it.
So. Exactly.
And in a mobile home park, it's all leased, you're leasing the lives, so you want
I agree, yeah.
I mean, when you're driving by, you wanna be able to see what they are hoarding all over in their backyard because it's against their policies.
Yeah, I agree.
We keep referencing mobile homes. What's the difference between mobile home and manufactured home? Because what I'm reading here is the only difference between the two types of homes is the date they were built. So. We're talking about a park. You're talking about a park.
Right, like the mobile home park over there.
But you. You need to make sure that.
The difference in that, I bought my home in two thousand and two, and it is a HUD, UVC coded home. So it can be moved to other areas.
But it's different than a mobile home in the manufacturing.
Anything that was.
Because mine is, yeah, mine has to be put.
No, as long as it's on the foundation.
To move it.
But it can be.
Yeah, but it.
We're gonna try to stay on track, okay? So manufactured home is defined in our town code on page ten, which includes mobile homes, manufactured homes, titled manufactured homes and untitled homes. So we are covering everything. As Sarah just mentioned, mobile homes are manufactured prior to nineteen seventy-six, manufactured homes are now regulated by HUD.
Yes.
And certain building code requirements to ensure health and safety, and they have a permanent foundation.
I think that's the foundation that makes the difference.
Do you remember that, Lori? We, we need to find those last year.
Yeah. And I was just thinking, we were trying to find something to find definitive between the two, and that would be putting, being able to put one on a permanent foundation. Okay.
So if, if somebody came in today and wanted to build a mobile home parks, they're gonna use manufactured housing as we wouldn't authorize an older mobile home anymore. Okay, so, and then back to the fence, I just looked briefly, I mean, I can't say conclusively, but I say three and four feet. We may just want to keep with the existing town code of four feet.
Yeah.
And that, and not change more than we have to at this point. That's kind of my thinking, but
We agree.
Agree with that. So the only thing we're really changing is the front yard setback is gonna be twenty feet.
Correct. What's, what's current, current code for the front yard fence height, three and a half or four?
Four.
Okay.
Things four. All right, so now we are gonna go to development standards for mobile home parks, which is just a little bit down the page. So I never knew this, but the town has a open space requirement or a cash and lieu requirement for mobile home parks.
We didn't know that either.
And this is straight out of our existing code. I've just moved it around, but I, I didn't change the language here at all.
Where is? Which, which page are we on?
Okay, so if you get it, what's my, twenty-seven?
Some section, okay.
If you just go right below. You with me, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we are now.
We are now.
So here's ten acres, we're gonna go back to two acres.
No. Wait, no. No, I think we want to stay at ten. So what do you guys, are we staying at, staying at ten, or did you want to go for a two acre mobile home park?
Can you give me an example of?
So Sandy, say Sandy has two acres.
I have two acres on my property.
She could put two mobile homes on her property. Right, nothing anybody could do about it.
How much is ten? Is that, how much is?
What is youth village?
That's a good question.
If you look further down in the definition, you can have several mobile homes per acre.
Seven.
Upon the development standards we just went through, which means with, you know, twenty-foot setback, ten-foot side setbacks, that's what it looks like. And then, you know, fortunately, we had this open space requirement, which is really slick.
That would mean that.
Not to exceed seven mobile homes per acre, which is. Yeah, you could have fourteen on my. So.
What do you guys think of a seven acre minimum as opposed to ten? I just think ten.
Ten is pretty big.
Iowa doesn't have that much land in the town, so I think if someone wanted to put in a new mobile home park, they're not gonna find ten acres, right?
Oh, we actually have more town than is developed right now. It's a lot that.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's land I'm, I'm not aware of, that are part of the town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the town by the water towers, property.
Oh.
The property across from by the fireplace, firehouse place, that's town.
All the land behind.
How many acres is you?
I, I think it's.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Because there's seventy mobile homes.
Oh, there's seventy in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's seven per acre.
Yeah.
So it's probably ten acres.
Yeah. I mean, they can.
I would be comfortable with a small mobile home park of five acres.
I was just gonna say.
We already have a mobile home park here. Do we want more mobile home parks? Is that what we're saying?
That's a very good question. If you keep them at ten, then we're not getting multiple little mobile home parks because the land behind the mobile home park headed that way, I don't know, I know at one time they had talked about coming into the town as well. So there's a lot of little pieces of land all around us, so we need to make.
So you're saying if we do lower it, then you're gonna, they're gonna be like, oh, well, you said two acres.
You could have a bunch of ours.
Would that be a ten acre minimum?
Yeah, I don't think that's a max.
No, no.
Minimum.
At one point, the mobile home park was considering buying the property next to them to expand.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a minimum.
Yeah, it would be a ten acre minimum.
Okay.
They can expand, so I read through this definition. They can expand on less than ten acres if it's an existing mobile home park expanding.
Okay.
They don't need ten acres to expand if it's our existing. And I am jumping back on the ten acre bandwagon.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, I like the ten acres. I don't want, I don't want a bunch of little two acre.
Well, if you think about it, it's Kiowa. If you make it ten acres minimum, where are they gonna buy ten acres in Kiowa to put in a mobile home park unless it's next to the existing mobile home park?
Yeah.
So we'll keep it ten.
So I'm gonna go back to the definitions. You don't, I'm not gonna torture you with that, but I will make that consistent with the ten acres definition section, and we will make this comprehensive. I just need, I needed your input. So the additional development standards are set forth like the four foot height, it's just repeating it, which I don't think hurts us. Two entrances, two parking spaces. You can have a two hundred and fifty foot storage area for trailers.
Go ahead, Rick. Meaning one storage area, not everybody has a storage area.
No, everybody would have a little shed.
Would have a little tiny shed.
Yeah, that's two hundred and fifty square feet, which is not very big.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm gonna hit you with one. You ready?
Yep.
When when the trailer park was put in, there were some, correct me if I'm wrong, pretty old trailers put in there. I mean, back from the fifty trailers put in there.
Yeah.
So do we want to put something in that states?
Newer than two thousand and twenty-four?
Your trailer has to be a twenty-twenty?
Or.
With a pitched roof?
Twenty years or something, give it more.
A twenty or a flat roof? You know, all those things.
What'll solve that, Rick, is now when I moved in over there seven years ago, I had to have an asphalt roof, pitch roof, had to have siding on it, could not be metalled, and it had to be UVC and HUD approved. Anything older, I believe it was nineteen eighty-six, anything prior to nineteen eighty-six are not HUD. Nor UVC.
Yeah.
So.
So we need to put a, a year, just. Yeah, we need to put a manufactured year and UVC and HUD in there. Because you could, I mean, if you drive down some streets up in Denver and look in their trailer parks, there are some of those that are fifties models, and they're renting them out there, and so I wouldn't want that in the town.
I propose instead of putting a manufacturer year, we put a minimum manufactured age.
Yeah.
Nothing older than twenty years.
I'd say nothing older than.
If you go to some campgrounds, if you have an RV, a lot of the campgrounds won't accept that RV if it's older than ten years old.
Right.
I don't think we need anything older than ten.
So I would be putting something in there like that, that if your house is not UBC and HUD and. Older than ten years, they can't put it in that trailer park.
Younger.
Ten years from date of application.
Yep.
I need to check with Safeville because I actually think we can't even issue. A building permit unless. It is a manufactured home approved by the Uniform Building Code.
Okay.
Which is under the building code, but we can certainly repeat it, I just don't wanna make a. An error, so we will, I'll get that cleared up.
I wouldn't have been allowed to move mine in. Um, it's a two thousand two model and I moved in there seven years ago. So if it could have only been ten years, I wouldn't have been allowed to move it in there. So I I think we're kinda being restrictive by, I agree with what Ruth said, UBC HUD.
Yes.
It doesn't matter what year if they are UBC and HUD.
Well, I based my twenty years on mobile home loans.
But the HUD, eh, well, I you you've gotta point out, but.
Cause it could be a UBC HUD, excuse my French, POS.
Right.
And that is not, I don't think that would be conducive to home values.
Could be a little more restricting, I mean, maybe fifteen, that's a.
The other part of it though is to think about it. Some of those POSs can't get down the road to be moved anyhow. So that's not even, if they can't move it down the road, it's not coming.
Well, I'm not so sure Safeville doesn't have to weigh in on this.
You aren't hearing the.
I said, I think we have to check with them.
Okay, let's have, let's go ahead and have Safeville check in on that one.
I just, we just need to make sure. Cause I just see under definitions manufactured home and mobile home. So we'll we'll get this straightened out and consistent, it's just. It's all over the, it's in different places, so we just gotta get it right everywhere.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I don't think I have anything more in part one.
Okay.
Unless anyone has any questions or concerns. So now we'll go to part two. And what what isn't included is what we did last week, which or two weeks ago or. Three weeks ago, which is the PUD and annexation, since that's done, it's not included in. Um, what was printed tonight, cause I just didn't wanna, you know, hurt more trees.
Thank you.
So part two, under the zoning code, you'll see article three, mobile home regulations, I've. Deleted that and put it in the body. Of. Other sections, so you can just at least see where that came from in our code. We're just moving it essentially and cleaning it up. So um, also we had mobile home subdivision requirements in the zoning code. So next week or two weeks, we're gonna be doing subdivision and I will move these. Subdivision requirements for mobile homes to the right place for subdivision.
Okay.
That's just a note to self, really. Uh, the next item, are you guys with me, which is non-conforming uses?
Yeah, yes.
So this is what the town code says now, I don't have any concerns, I just want. Um, everybody to read this and alterations and extensions. So it's basically saying if we have an old non-conforming use in town, it can't be expanded. And um, we're not gonna, you know, permit repair. This, and the the next one discontinuance, I'm not sure uh, that's the right title, but. Uh, you'll see as we move through this tonight, I'm changing some of the titles so they are easier to find if you ask. Kim or probably Sasha at this point. We know it's in the code, but sometimes it's so hard to find where it is.
Yes.
So like.
So the title of discontinuance.
Discontinuance there, she like, that's not maybe the right title, so we have.
Code says now. Uh, maybe we say discontinuance of non-conforming use, just so it's easy to find. So I'm changing it to that. Okay, non-conforming lots. So this me, this is really in our code to say. You know, anybody who has a lot is entitled to build a home and that's. Kind of a universal law. I don't understand the nineteen seventy five trigger and I was wondering what you guys know about that. Anyone?
We're in section sixteen dash seventy four.
There's such a weird date. We were like, right.
Yeah, I just don't, I was really wondering where that comes from, this is what the code says. There must be some re historic reason, but I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
And do we have, do we have that many, you guys? Non-conforming lots?
Didn't we have the non-conforming word? Um, Debbie dropped her.
Yes.
Yes, that little tiny house was non-conforming.
We had to have the easement or. Yes.
Twelve inches on each side, right?
Yeah. No, it was nine, it was supposed to be ten and it was nine.
Yeah, it had a.
Had a trailer on her before, ripped it out and then.
But it was on two properties, basically.
That little lot is two property?
It, no, the the trailer was sitting on two lots or two properties, it was in the wrong spot. So the guy that's got the big lot took back his property, which was another s- almost eight foot of the trailer house space.
You know where I think it's coming from, if you see below, it says ordinance thirty fours, section three and four nineteen seventy five. Be when the town decided, you know, what was non-conforming at the time. So I think I just stick with it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And the next article is energy. I um. I don't have any thoughts one way or the other about this, I've never seen it come up. It's just really, where do we have electrical distribution centers? The only thing I'm not super thrilled about is that um. They can be located in any zone district, but I guess you have to have natural gas and gasoline in there. So. I guess we just keep that in there.
Are there any homes in town that are um? Liquid propane?
I they may just get rid of our propane tank.
They do?
And they do abide by that it has to be ten feet from the back.
Okay.
Some of them run off of propane, so they are. Yep, so they're installed ten feet off the back. Well, they're maybe the setbacks, but they do, some of them do have liquid propane because of their. Design, um.
Would that be because like Rick said, a lot, some of them might be built in the fifteenth.
And when I'm looking at electrical distribution networks, is that the same as the Excel coming in?
I have that question.
And putting in their distribution? Their plans are to put a bunch of those boxes in various places.
I don't think we can keep them out, first of all, they have franchise agreements and they have easements.
Like the fence that it says it needs to be around it.
Yeah, you gotta make sure they get the fence and stuff.
What do you think, Ruth?
I think it's fine, I just want everybody to realize it was drafted nineteen seventy five.
Tell tell me, Ruth, it says telephone to other electronic communications, we've had an influx of fiber optic going in. Through town is that includes?
Yeah, so that's where we see it all the time, right, they run down. The existing easements, utility easements, and we give them those franchise fees. Or we're supposed to make all that money, right, but we never do.
We don't make bank on that, plus we have to keep going back calling them to repair what they've already destroyed.
And that's really run by the fed, it's federal government's hard to say no.
Yep. Under that app where it says telephone to other electronic communications, do you need to add fiber optics in there or is that just understood?
Or revise that wording, cause I'm sure this was made back at a time and.
Well, nineteen eighty five, eighty four, maybe. Uh, Rocky Mountain came in out here and they did install like cable here in Kiowa and over in Elizabeth. So that they could try to get in with TCI so that TCI could put in um, cable TV for people out here.
Elon Musk is sending his fiber optic through here for his satellites.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to update the language or if it would just be understood.
I can add fiber optics and cable.
Okay.
How many still have a landline telephone?
Me.
I do.
I do.
The cell signals so unreliable.
Yes.
Okay. Um, supplemental regulations, I deleted the lot size regulations because. It's really repeating what the non-conforming says.
Right.
And then the home occupations is addressed in our new kind of spreadsheet of permitted uses.
Yeah, all the red ones are ones that we've gotten rid of or moved somewhere, yeah.
So Ruth?
Yep.
On parking space requirements, we're running into this with Safeville and various projects right now. And it seems like their requirements or specifications regarding parking. Uh, requirements is being driven off of some sort of building code is what it sounds like. Something that the state is requiring or the federal government's requiring.
Building code?
Yeah.
I can check, we can check with them on that, I haven't heard that, but. Doesn't surprise me.
They call over a couple of our commercial property projects regarding parking spaces. And I think maybe part of it's driven by ADA.
So if you look as you go down this section, first of all, I wasn't changing it unless somebody had an objection and. We have accessible spaces. Set forth in our code, so I think this might be an area that we need Safeville to look at too.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Alright. And then our next one is damaged structures, this was really interesting to me. If a structure is vacant due to an act of God for longer than two years. The structure shall not be rebuilt.
Gotta go like three more pages.
Yes, yeah, been this goes all the way through parking, sorry. Yes. So the the purpose of this section is, let's say a house is burnt down. And the people didn't rebuild it for two years, that means that the town has the ability to tell them. You know, they had to demo it.
They have to demo it or they can't build on it.
Yeah, well, they 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 can't use the existing burnt down structure.
Yeah, they gotta.
Structure, they have to start over.
Company and start over.
I I'm not even sure.
That doesn't read that way, but it says.
Okay, let me ask you a question on that. Some of those people up there in Boulder.
Yep.
That lost their home in that fire, it's taken their insurance companies forever to. Turn around their money and um, and to rebuild. So in my opinion, two years is pretty good, but.
For somebody in that situation, right?
Yeah, in that situation where you have a catastrophic event.
That would probably be more of a.
You know, then maybe it'll take them a little longer, but insurance is gonna go sky high through the roof.
Yes.
And it's gonna be difficult for insurance companies to go through their rigmarole and then do what they need to do to. Get the homeowner going.
Is that something we could do, Ruth, if a situation like that presents itself, is that something that this commission can? Provisions for.
I think we just delete this section because. For example, any home that built in Boulder, which is a really good example. They have to come back in and build the home in accordance with the current zoning and with the current building code. So they're kind of stuck anyway, so I'm not sure, I even, I just think this muddies the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understand probably why they put it in in nineteen ninety six, but today the town has plenty of authority to say. Hey, we'll work with you, but you have to comply with our zoning and building codes, whatever you.
I was just gonna say, uh. If it's taken two years for the insurance to process a claim, more than likely that structure is not rebuildable anyway.
So I'm just gonna delete this unless.
Yeah, I would delete it.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, design guidelines, look, the town has the ability to create talent. Um. Design guidelines fences is again in that. Um, you know, new diagram that talks about fencing, so we don't need this. Oh, this is when it got, this is when it really made my day, like I'm always. I made it all the way to the end and then we have parking of recreational vehicles, which actually should probably. Even go back to where parking is, I should probably move that. But. So this is where it came up the most is. I'm sure the town wants the ability to not have RVs parked on the town roads and right away.
That's accurate.
So this is for seven days, you guys may want to consider shortening that timeframe.
Well, it's forty eight hours in any seven day period.
Yeah, so they can't be there more than two days each week.
Yes.
We're okay with them moving around?
Well, it says for the purpose of this restriction, merely moving a vehicle to another portion of the town shall not commence a new forty eight hour period. Meaning they gotta move out of town.
Move it from your backyard to your backyard and then back to your.
And those people and those that have those will move it three feet.
Yeah.
So that that mark is moved and now they gotta start over again.
Yeah.
That's insane.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and you you can go through any ta- uh, street now in downtown Denver. And it's it's unreal to see.
It's disgusting.
I think that covers us, right?
Yeah.
I think we're good.
And what that does is it means they have to move, they're not gonna be the broken down one sitting. They're not gonna be the broken down one sitting there forever and ever and ever. And if you only have to move it three feet, that's okay. Everybody get out push. That we're not gonna have to go into that.
So we. It's defined pretty well.
So we leave part A as is. I would like to go down to part B and expand that to fourteen days. If you have family members coming in from Texas parking their RV for a long. Visit, I think two weeks is reasonable.
Agree.
Private property, not not town street.
We did way back when I was in. Because I. Because. You know, we were redoing our house and if my parents wanted to pull their fifth wheel. And park it for three or four weeks, we were doing the inside.
Well, then you request.
We should be able to, you know, have to live in there. You know.
I like the variance idea.
For how long?
I would say in a month, but. And come in and get a permit from you.
I've not been approached with that yet. I wasn't aware we ever had any of those.
Some folks in town that have. Put their RV in the yard and then renting it out. And there are some folks that have. RV in the backyard and stay there for years. And so there needs to be a regulation. I mean, if you're gonna store your RV in your backyard, go for it.
Right, no, this is an occupied RV.
Yeah, right.
I like a month. I mean, I if you're redoing your kitchen or something or. I don't know, maybe that's.
Clean up your mess every day.
Then they can come get a variance and. For fifteen days, they can come back in and add more.
I think a month is a little long. A month. Comfortable.
We get in another fifteen days variance for the next fifteen days because we're not finished doing what we're doing right now.
So two things. One is, this language has been on the town. Books, this is not enough. This is nothing new or different, eh? B, I don't recommend a variance. We have. Um issues with our variance requirements now, and it really. In order to qualify under a definition of a variance is a hardship. So we may want to use some other sort of process other than. Requiring a variance because it takes time. And Kim and Sasha both know that, like every time we have to go through the variance process. We have publishing and, you know, it's. It's not ideal to facilitate this type of use on private property in our small town. That's what I think, so.
Think legally you could do anything about somebody putting in the backyard.
So here's, I think, where. The things in going on in Boulder might would come into play. Because there are people who are living in their RV. Where they're waiting for their house to be built. For two years. And in those cases. That is a hardship. So would that, I mean.
Unless it's specifically approved by the town board of trustees.
There we go. That works. Sounds good to me. Well, because you know, if it's if it's there and somebody goes up to him and says, hey, we have a ten day variance parking only. They'd say, well, what can we do? We need another ten days.
Yes.
But can we can we expand it to fifteen?
Fourteen or fifteen, that's two weeks.
I had fourteen. If you want fifteen, I can do that.
That sounds like the consensus.
Young man. That talked to me down at Mona's the other morning when I was having coffee. And he is actively looking for someone. To allow him to park. His RV so he can live in it permanently.
I think I saw him on Facebook.
Yeah, he's on Facebook and he's looking for property too. And you know, there is people in upper county that are leaving. Letting people park their campers on their property and pay him five hundred dollars a month. Here's the garden hose, hook it up to your thing. Here's an extension cord.
And as long as they're out of town, I don't care. But if they're in town, then.
Yeah, no, we don't want it in town.
We don't want it in town.
But actively searching for a place to put it.
Right. We had somebody approach us a couple of years ago wanting to put a prop, put a trailer on our property right there so they could stay for a month.
So we're moving to fourteen or fifteen days.
Yep.
Fifteen.
I say fifteen days.
It's always been fourteen or fifteen days.
Okay, so let's make it fifteen instead of ten days in a ninety day period.
And then if they i- if if you need more, you could. Board of trustees and apply for it or what have you.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
The next session section is the floodplain regulations. Uh actually, to be perfectly honest, I've never read these until I started doing this. And uh they're very, very detailed and specific. And um. I don't even. We have a floodplain map.
We do. Go ask the school. They'll tell you.
Yeah, we we do have floodplain areas.
Yeah, the counties. We just did a whole floodplain study, so it should be on the county's website. Information.
Yeah.
I just want everybody to notice you go through this definition. You see manufactured home again. Manufactured home park and RV again. I deleted it because you can find it, the definitions, other places in the code that make more sense.
Perfect.
Yes.
But the the subject just never went away. Really?
Like a bad.
And we don't like it.
It was a bad.
And you would not look in floodplain for manufactured.
No, because you can't.
It talks about variances, but these variances are just limited. To the federal and state regulations surrounding a floodplain, so I'm not touching them.
No, let's not.
Agreed.
Manufactured homes is in there, though. I just want, again.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're on section three now, but I just. It's probably different than what you guys have in front of you, so.
That's okay. Hold on, so.
Oh, no, here we go. This is gonna be.
What does it start with, Ruth? Which what is?
We're on Article eight administration at the go through the floodplain, finish.
So you should find a yellow page.
What about recreational vehicle? It was deleted all. That's it's defined elsewhere in the code.
Yes, yes. Okay, so which which section is eight? Got it, okay. Article eight administration, okay.
Okay. So zoning enforcement officer. As far as I know, we we don't use that title. It's probably ultimately. And Kim's here, so she she now can speak. It's probably Kim unless it's code enforcement.
Anything regarding zoning violations is code enforcement.
So change zone to code?
Yeah, that would be code enforcement officer.
You're into code bullshit.
Okay. Oh, yeah, this is gonna get into. We're gonna talk about the municipal court thing. But then this too. Uh zoning permit. This is a very important section. You can't do anything unless you. I'll go in and change all these too. Code enforcement officer, but this is the provision that. Means so much when somebody does unauthorized work.
Yeah.
So you have to. Anyway, I'm not gonna torture you guys by changing this while we're I'm talking.
Except the the building permit, application records, all that stuff.
Isn't that safe bill?
Well, no, it's kept with. I mean, yes, Safeo, but we keep a copy.
Okay.
Because it goes into the address file, so each place has an address file. So all of that, anything that is done on that property goes into one of our files, so the code enforcement officer actually doesn't keep that. We do.
Okay, so that would be building officials.
Say in the town. In the town offices. Because it can change over time, but just. Says we're responsible. We should be. Able to keep it. These files moving forward.
Yeah, unless we keep them with the property address.
So the next. Article is, so here's where I've renamed it. To zoning amendments because this provision is just limited. To revising zoning.
We back up a minute so I can make sure I'm clear in what we just did. Go back to administration where we just changed zoning to code enforcement officer.
Yep.
I'm reading all those definitions underneath there. And all of those have nothing to do with a code enforcement officer. Those have. Direct correlation back to our billing officials. That is Safebuilt that does all of that.
I was just saying, I thought that was all would have been through Safebuilt instead of us.
So that's not a zoning, it's not a code enforcement officer, it's not a zoning enforcement officer. That is the building. Um officials with Safebuilt.
So the building official is dealing with zoning, whether somebody has.
Our permitting, our. Occupancy, anything to do with a building and a structure here in the town. Has to do with Safebuilt. Anything outside that structure. As far as parking or.
Containing or.
Containing or streets is our civil engineers with core.
So maybe what we want. In my mind, in the ideal world, we want. People, they have to have zoning approval, which is what we have with the gentleman. Right now that he has an illegal use going on selling his A. Which the building department doesn't get involved with. But maybe the la- the definition section here.
But they are involved in it.
Safebill?
Yes, let me tell you why they're involved in it. Because he's asking for a business permit. In a zone. That doesn't permit that type of business. So say it's involved in it, but not in a building capacity, but as a zoning capacity.
Right, so. I think we I need to massage this provision because. What we want it to say is. You can't violate our zoning code and you can't violate our building code. And in the event that you do that. We have enforcement measures.
Right, but how do we put that on paper? I mean, how do we make that reflect that instead of putting zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah, because it's.
That brings me back to the town administrator. Because only in the generic, only in the generic sense that you can assign those responsibilities.
Yes, I would say.
Or delegate them.
Assignees. Or representative. There's a great thing. Town administrator doesn't do it. Town clerk does it.
Sasha, bite your tongue now.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say as for that other property. Involved with building anyway if he puts those.
Can you say county officials?
County officials.
County officials.
No, because you need a specific.
Agents.
Oh, well, then it it does follow.
That has the authority or can delegate the authority. So I would say, okay, town clerk. Or any um. Assigned or.
Yes.
Write a sentence about that you could delegate that.
Technically, that me then that deals with all of that.
Yep, so let me come back to that. Because I hear what you're saying, except who's gonna be responsible?
Sasha in there.
I'm not getting in that one, you guys.
Yeah, fine.
Can you put town officials or their assigns?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't lock it in.
Don't lock it into one person or one position.
I can say the town generically and then write um. You know, language to cover us because we do have all kinds of consultants, right? We have. You know, and.
Zoning, building.
Okay, yeah, we'll just make it.
Fix it.
I can't really do it on the fly right this second.
We're just putting Sasha's name right here.
Yeah, Sasha. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next.
Article nine zoning amendment. So the one problem here is um. Our fees and. Just we do we just wanna refer to our. Current fee schedule in effect.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I did wanna keep the chargeback agreement there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about that one. Um but I want to potentially move it. So. Here's the application requirements for rezoning. So here our cost reimbursement is like hidden in rezoning. And my recommendation is that we put it somewhere more prominent. Because it not only comes up in rezoning, but it comes up with PUDs.
Yeah.
And other sections, so I recommend that we. Relocate that. Um. And then also, if anyone. Has. An opinion about the language that we've used. Um, I think it works. I think moving forward, we'll have a. Slim tight. Chargeback agreement, but I think the code provisions work.
Yeah. So where do you want to move that cost to?
The cost, the cost reimbursement?
Yeah. Just out of curiosity.
I don't have a good answer. Maybe under. Administration with its own title.
Okay. Okay.
But that's how come sometimes. We can't find things.
Yeah.
And so the next section I'm recommending uh. A title like review process for zoning. Code amendments because. You know, we just had one, right?
Yeah.
And the old title used to just be review. So it's really hard for somebody to go through our code. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it comes up with twenty, thirty reviews. You have to find it within those.
Yep. Okay, so the next one is something that's haunted. Kim and I, and that's public notice. Hidden in here. So this is public notice for all rezonings and zoning. And sign and sign code. Didn't we decide we don't want it? As a sign code variance?
Are we just calling out sign code variances specifically?
You mean just for putting up a sign?
Yeah, or a variant, so that means a larger sign or a lit sign.
Yes, not the small tiny ones that, okay.
This requires publication. I'm I'm not sure the town wants to be doing that.
No. Town has done that, but we don't want to.
Yes, we did.
So do we want to um?
Well, some people.
Let me tell you this, so. We set on a major. Thoroughfare on a highway. There are other variables regarding those signs that are applicable to CDOT. So when you. Submit a variance request for a sign. CDOT is a referral agency if it sets on State Highway eighty-six. C dot is a referral agency if it sets on state highway eighty six. And they have their own specifications that. That person has to abide by. If it sets on state highway eighty six, and that was part of what the school's problem was, it couldn't be flashing, it couldn't be. Certain things at night. Drivers couldn't be. Yeah, it couldn't be bigger than a certain square footage. So those are all C dot driven. And they had to get through our variance process, they had to provide us with. Approval by C dot to put that on state highway eighty six.
So I don't know if that's in our sign code, that's the, one of the last things we talk about. So we can come back to that. And then so review uses, I'm not sure. We want um. To have public notice and publication for those either.
Although I do have one question. Um. Because um, legal notice in the general circulation of newspaper within the town. Although as we move to more. Digital. Um, would it be applicable to? Also put it online or or put it online?
Not or.
And, or is that even an option? I'm just thinking, some people, some people do not get the newspaper. I do not get the newspaper. I wouldn't see it in the newspaper.
We get an abundance of people that said, we never saw that.
Both, but I would not see online. Okay, I'm just saying because.
I probably would cuz I go on the ransom news on Facebook.
I will tell you this, it doesn't matter how we do it. Complaining because they didn't see it.
Agreed, but I think those are reasonable ways, but I think. I mean, even my. I just don't look online.
Well, I'll tell you how we handle it right now, because we have had so many complaints, and even though there's not a stipulation or code requiring it. We do what the code says to do, I put it in the newspaper, and then we also put it on our website.
I agree, both, I mean.
Just by policy now, just so that we.
I'm just saying, but it's not, it's not listed.
It's not requirement.
Right, I just didn't know if that was something. Yes, you could always do more.
Without making it a requirement.
Without making it a requirement. Okay, and that's fine.
My only problem with making it a requirement. Is that it falls on staff, so if they miss it by a day.
Right.
Come online, then you've got a defective public notice.
Good, yeah.
We have a website designer who posts those on their force, because now by law. They can't be PDF attachments, they have to be included on the website.
As a thing.
As a text. So she has the ability to do that, so we send it to her. And she puts it on there, but sometimes because she works for the state, she doesn't see that for a day. And so. She won't get it on there in the timeframe that we needed to have it.
Right, in the fifteen days.
But we did the newspaper.
Right.
Okay, and that's fine, I just wanted to throw it out there to the board.
I, cuz I like it how we can always do more.
Okay, right.
But. Right, don't like fit us into something where.
Stay, yeah, stay with the newspaper, because I think a lot of. There's still a lot of legal things that.
Yeah, I agree.
Have to be in the newspaper, it doesn't say put it online, it says newspaper.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to check. No, I like doing it, though, I think that's gonna hit more people.
Yeah, and we do, we do post it online. It reduces the phone calls and the emails. So it's beneficial, right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna send it to you.
All right, Ruth, what next?
Think she's gonna answer.
Next section. Planning commission.
So the next section is. The planning commission, the reason I've highlighted this is. Here's the town's opportunity. To change how many people need to be on the board. And the eligibility issues. To myself about that today. So. In a lot of communities, you have planning and zoning members. That are design or construction. Professionals. Who just wanna help the community and aren't eligible. So that's one thing to consider, the other thing to consider is. Iowa's such a small town, we have problems. With getting seven members and. This is your opportunity to weigh in on this. And the Board of Trustees clearly has a right to say no to these recommendations, but. Here's your chance, so.
But two of them.
Uh, according to this, aren't you a member of the Board of Trustees?
No.
Oh, you're not.
No, no.
I need a variance, just this, just.
Enlisted as commissioner, I remember.
Commissioner on planning variance. Not on board.
But that means we really need five members and two of the Board of Trustees making the seven, so we're really talking five. Yes.
You don't need any of that. You don't need two people from the Board of Trustees. You don't need seven members. You need what works for the town.
Yes.
Right.
Maybe it's five total members and maybe, you know, the com-. Commitment of the Board of Trustees, maybe that's not fair. To make them also participate, because it's not paying. Or maybe you can attract, you know, an architect or an engineer, or I don't know, I, I just. Guys, I just want you to know, you're not married to anything except you need something that can have a quorum.
What do you got?
Ruth. Combated that in this situation, because we, in our charter, I believe it's the charter. It's split up saying we have to have a certain number of planning. Members, and we have to have a certain number of variance. Members, so we had a planning commission and a variance committee. Dictated in our charter, I believe it is, so. We could not get an adequate number for either one of them. So that's why we are now called a joint. Planning and variance. Committee or commission.
Committee.
And that was at the recommendation of our last legal counsel. Um, because we could not get members to join on either one. So how we're supposed to supposedly to be handling that is if we have variance. Uh, things come up before this commission, then we do that under the hat of a, of a variance commission. And then when it's planning, we take off the variance hat, we put on the planning hat. And we make sure there's a distinct. Uh. A distinction made in our, in our minutes.
That this is a planning.
That is what they're considering is the variance.
Yep.
Not as the planning commission, but as the variance committee.
Okay, so I am. Gonna be the bearer.
Bad news again?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, I can handle it, this should be so much.
And there's no such language in the charter.
Okay, well, then it might be in the code, cuz it is one or the other. There is.
So if, if it's in the charter, then we can't change it. If it's in the code, we can change it all day long.
Okay, so then let's go look through the code, because there is a definition for variance committee. And how many members need to be on there? And there is a definition for planning commission. And how many members need to be on there? And those two were combined into a joint.
Yeah, joint, yeah, planning and variance committee.
Because we couldn't fucking get enough people. So if we could get enough people.
Or if we just make it a joint.
Which is why your binder says planning and variance committee.
Yeah, my, I was on the planning and then my wife was on the variance.
Yes.
At one point, and then we just had to. Sit together.
I think the more the mayor, because we have so many more different.
I agree, we have. But what is a court, how many is a court? Four out of six.
Well, I, I think it's dictated by.
The number of people.
People of participation.
Yes.
I mean, we've had a forum with three people.
Yes, is that so many people that showed up?
Right, yes. But is it like?
Because you could have. And that, and but see, and also that's why we have the board members here, just like we, on the Board of Trustees, if we have. Um, well, I don't know. If we have three, then it would be either majority or it would be split for three. Forum with two people, where, where a board member is required to be there. Hi Ruth, that's how I feel.
That's how the week is.
I don't see it, Kim.
Should we just table this? I know it's there, I saw it. Writs his face, put it in my face, I know it's there.
But I think it is, is the board of adjustment stuff.
Yes, yes, they're called board of adjustments instead of variance. That's something we should change to.
Yeah, we don't know, so what are we?
Just fix it.
So board of adjustments.
Thanks. Just fix it.
Yeah, so it should be joint planning and adjustment.
That's, yeah.
Committee?
We're gonna make sure that if that's right or not.
So this is the board of adjustment?
No, we call it the joint planning and variance, but in our. Right, variance is referred to in board of adjustment.
So we need to change it.
There's only one or two things the board of adjustment does, so. Um.
No.
I'll come back to this and then I'll come back. With the recommendation on.
No, no, you have six of you. There's eight. And actually, we have three four members. And actually, we have nine people now, cuz we have six of you and three of them.
Got it.
No.
No, but they could be here to put their two cents in.
And to make quorum, because we have used board members to make quorum in the past.
Right.
I see.
Okay, so.
Some time ago.
Could you tell me who that person was that? The previous?
I'm sorry, Ruth, the previous what?
Who made the previous recommendation about that?
You want it to say out loud? Previous legal counsel?
Just wondering.
Okay, I think that's.
We can talk about it later, sorry.
And what's that person before you?
Okay.
One's up so much.
Let's go.
Some meetings, I think, are at six o'clock, not seven.
This is sixty seven.
Well, we.
I'm not sure you even need a time.
Oh, yes, cuz it's the first and third.
There should be a limit, which are hard to find online and needed code. That is something we did in a resolution last year, because Lori. Found in the code that it listed seven block.
That's the other thing I need help with, because I remembered that we. Have the school impact fee ordinance, but we're gonna do that in two weeks. And we'll get that incorporated in the new text.
Send you that resolution?
Yeah. So the powers of the um. Planning can. Commission and then the fee again here, we're just gonna say the current. Uh, fee schedule.
Correct, okay.
Removal members, see you guys.
Ye who is gonna throw me under the bus, all right.
I think that ends that one. The third one's pretty quick, I promise.
Okay, let's go.
We're gonna put in current fee schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, here it is.
Board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment and appeals.
We just didn't get far enough, Kim.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna delete that.
That was the key to finding that.
Yeah, we're gonna delete that, right? No, we're saying very.
So board of adjustment is, the powers are. Typically very limited to appeals associated with building. And the building official. And it says under powers, you'll see that. So typically. Typically, a board of adjustment is a statutory creature that sits out there. And is hardly ever used, if at all, when. Somebody who has a building permit. Has an issue with the building official. And the only people that can hear that. Appeal is the board of adjustment. It's a very standard. Statutory creature across the country. That is limited to that power. So we can. We can change this to be. A lot of times. The Board of Trustees can act as. The board of adjustment and like the liquor licensing authority or. The planning commission to, can go into session and hear. A board of adjustment claim, or it can be. You know, two mem-. Three and two members of each. I, I'm very uncomfortable with this concept that I now understand is it combined? Because it's really just. For a problem we would have with our building official. Which really doesn't happen.
So do we have to have just one person that is? An adjustment type of view?
No, you really need, you need to have due process. So I would, my fifteen years, or however many. At the town of Avon render, running. Hundreds of millions of dollars of construction and development, I never had a board of adjustment claim. I've never seen one.
Can I ask you this? I mean, you've gotta have it in there, cuz it's statutory creature. And we say that. There are. We have our planning and variance. And that of that group, there are four members of that group. That if needed, will serve on the board of adjustments.
No problem.
Perfect.
So just like it says right there, where you got four members and then one from the Board of Trustees.
Right, yeah, utilize the same group of people, but there are four people specific to this as needed if it comes up.
Perfect.
And I say it's not the chair or the co-chair.
Yeah.
Typically, it's who's ever available, you know?
Yeah, whoever's available.
Yeah, whoever out of us.
Let me know, so I can find something to do with all that.
All right, move on. That's, that's good, Kim.
Perfect.
That, I better understand now then.
Yeah.
But I will work on this and clean it up and come back to you.
So with that said. Should the section that says planning, should it say planning and variance, or does it matter? Does not mean variance, should the section pertaining to planning commission be changed to joint planning and variance?
No, I'm not even sure where that one came from either.
Cuz we were trying to add the adjustment to have enough people.
Right, right. So we really don't need to. Was it just planning?
I think we just go by the code and caught planning commission and then we have a board adjustment.
Right, okay.
We, we're good.
But we just made binders.
Oh, that's right, cross it off.
That's okay, I can make a new sheet for the binder.
We can't do it, we just made binders.
You think so, we are gonna be the planning commission?
Yeah, we're playing commission now.
Yeah, fine.
I don't want it to be a variance.
I'll make you sheets for your binder.
Yes, you are now part of the planning.
And then in fees on that one, we'll go to say current, see current fee structure. And then in fees on that one, we'll go to say current, see current fee structure.
Yes.
Okay. The next one. Best of property rights.
Last page of two lines.
Yes, they're right over there.
One page.
Okay, I say, cause they're the hard copy, that's extra. Okay, so where are we at?
Those Board of Trustees members. Remember, this is the heart of our claims with.
Which, which section are you in, in the green?
Best of property rights.
Okay.
Yeah. It's yellow at the very bottom.
Okay, got it, best of property rights. Okay, got it, it's at the bottom of the page, okay, cut it.
Okay, so a site-specific development plan. Other document. This is a statutory creature, which means the state defines what this is. We just implement it. So a final subdivision plat- or P U D Development Plan, or a development agreement can be a site-specific development plan. Have to make sure that's in there. Okay, I just changed that, I added development agreement. I think it's in there somewhere, but let's make sure. Creation of vested rights has to be with the site-specific development plan. Failure to include a statement makes it not work. Waiver, this is all currently in our town code. So the thing that got Kraft in the most trouble with the town is this last section, sixteen dash two twenty-six. And that is, it says it's the applicant's responsibility once they get all these approvals and we file and do our ordinances properly, that they have to publish that they got vested rights. This is unusual. This is not something you typically see in this state. I don't have an opinion, I just wanna tell you that this really got Kraft in trouble, because he failed to perfect his vesting. Had he done this, and we had screwed up all the other parts, he, he would have had a good argument. Actually, it, it would have made us, it almost impossible for us to set aside that agreement, if he had done this.
So in essence, it protected the town.
It did protect the town.
We're gonna leave it right there then. Leave it there.
Okay, so I know it's getting late, but this is probably one of the harder provisions, because there's some discussion from the Code Enforcement Officer, and I think amongst members in the town and the Board of Trustees and maybe all of you, is how do we enforce our zoning code and some of these regulations? And so uh, violations and penalties says, anybody who violates our zoning code, they're, and they can be penalized. The problem is that we don't go so far as to say we can hail you into municipal court.
Why don't we have that?
It's just not in here.
Oh, okay. I got a retired municipal court judge that called while I was gone. Offering his services as needed. Suzie hadn't called me. She knows him from jurisdiction.
So maybe what the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Trustees is that we look at going back to having municipal court. It really seems to me that that's a policy decision of the Board of Trustees, because it costs money. I can certainly draft it, or I can wait to see if you're gonna get you know, backing from the whole board. I mean, I can say the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we have our Code Enforcement Officers start issuing fines and having municipal court. Or that they, you know, your recommendation is for the Board of Trustees to consider doing this.
Alright, so Planning Commission, what are your thoughts on that? Moving forward, if so, we need to make a vote, so that way Ruth can approach the Town Board with that recommendation.
Can you educate me on what a municipal court is, where it comes from, who comprises it? Its legal authority?
The municipal court is in our town code. And the provisions for, uh, municipal court and actually a police force. So, so we've delegated our authority to the sheriff, right, the county, the county for.
Yes.
Is what the difference is, municipal court deals with ordinance violations. They do traffic fines, traffic tickets.
Okay.
Where a county court would do more criminal. Without municipal court?
No.
So a judge has to assess the fines in order for them to be ordered to pay them.
Okay.
If they don't pay them, a municipal court judge can issue a bench warrant for not paying certain fines.
But we have to have a.
So there are different levels of progression. At this point, we do not have a municipal. No, we don't, and that's where our problem is with code enforcement, is code enforcement really right now is going off of sending certified letters, trying to work with them, guide them into doing the right thing.
And if they say no, you can't make them.
Yeah. But it's an, it's a. It's a, it's a, an officer of the municipal court can issue a notice of violation with a. So the code enforcement officer would issue the violation. She would follow it up with certified letters.
Okay.
Um, saying, if you don't comply with this, we, we do our due diligence documenting all of our attempts to work with them, get them to comply. If they don't, um, we can issue a. I got it, I got it.
So do we hold the court in here?
Elizabeth does, they're, comes into their town hall.
You can bring in a retired judge.
Yes, it'd just be a contract that he knows, maybe Suz- what Suzie's explained to me, a lot of small municipalities, they may hold court quarterly, they may hold it once a month, and they will come in and the judge will sit there and he'll talk to all of them on the docket and make decisions there, if he's gonna issue fines or anything more than that, but only a judge can do that, Suzie can't do that, the board can't do that. So we're kinda making veiled threats right now.
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Yep.
Community knows that, so they're, they're just saying, man, what are you gonna do?
And that's the place where we're at now, okay.
Alright, so.
I'm, I'm up for it.
Alright, so do I have a motion to, uh, have Ruth go to the board, letting them know that the Planning Commission suggests that we look at code enforcement fines and municipal court?
I have a question though, I mean, right now he wants to volunteer, but what happens if he, he doesn't wanna volunteer anymore?
Is that just a volunteer basis? It would be contracted with him, because we'd be contracted.
Right, so, but he would charge, like, say he says, my services are ten dollars an hour. And so twice a month, he comes in for four hours and.
But once we start it, we gotta keep it going, like, whether it's him or someone else.
Yes, Rick. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I motion that.
Okay, do I have a second?
My second.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of moving this forward to the Town Board, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Alright, so.
Can I have the official wording of what you just said quickly?
That the Planning Commission recommends to the Town Board to move forward with code enforcement fines and municipal court. Ruth will drop something up to that effect.
Okay. We're gonna get tea.
And I don't care.
Okay. I just wanted to have that clear word.
We've written up Terry so many times, that's time for to pay the price.
Sure. Okay, what page are we on now?
We're almost done, we have the sign code.
So, commercial signs. This would, this include that, like, the school, is that in? So where are we at? I went to the yellow.
What's, what's not in yellow is our existing code. Commercial signs, I thought you guys might.
You mean, I can't put an eight by ten commercial flashing red light in my ear?
No, no.
No, it's gotta be green.
It has to be green.
So here is something interesting. It's under variants and appeals, and the event.
You're going backwards.
Where are we?
No, we're not, we're at sixteen dash two seventy-one. It says he can fly to the Board of Adjustment. This is under the sign variants. Sixteen dash two seventy-one.
Okay.
What happened to two seventy-six? Do we need to discuss two sixty-seven first? You've got it highlighted in yellow.
The only reason is because I, I don't know how comfortable the town is with its existing commercial sign regulations.
Is it, is this current?
Yes.
I don't, I don't see any issues with the current code. I'm gonna put up a thirty inch foot. Speaking from current situations that happening with me and signs. I know that Elizabeth charges, Elizabeth requires a permit for signs that are put up in town rightways. And they can only be there a certain number of days. It has to be per sign. And there's a certain, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know, Sasha, there'll be a certain number of signs that they're allowed to do. Currently, what our code says is only signs that are applicable to a special event coming up. County Fair, the Theater, our special events are the only signs that could be put up around town. Okay, I'm running into issues with people from outside of town mainly. Putting for rent, for sale, up on our stop signs, up on our electrical poles.
Or the guy that put the advertising in our front yard.
In our front yard of town hall.
Roofing or whatever it was.
So, I'd like to look at Elizabeth and see what they, they have in their code, Ruth, as far as how they handle these signs. Because I don't think it'd be a big revenue source, but and I, I need to know what the boards, you know, how they entertain it. Do they want somebody other than special event signs, putting signs up around town for any specified period of time? Do they wanna do something like that with a fee? Um, do we wanna keep it the way it is? Um, do we want to initiate a violation fee to repeat offenders, um, that keep putting it up on our stop signs and our electrical poles and?
Will you do that in Elizabeth? If you're gonna put a sign up for any time, you go to the town hall and you get a permit and you stick a little sticker on that sign. And that tells you how long that sign can be up.
Yes.
And it's a little yellow, everybody can see it. And then maintenance, Mr. Mendez goes around and checks those signs. And the one that are expired, they pull them.
We, we have one, he's two days a week.
Well, and I also think, putting some sort of language in there as to how they can hang them, because I've got one person that lives in Elizabeth, that has taken a liking to putting the same wire signs that you would normally put in the ground. They have a design that goes through the holes in the stop signs, and he's been putting them up on weekends at the highest point of the stop sign. So on Monday mornings, Kim starts her morning off with going around town, standing on the back of a truck, pulling them all out of the stop signs. And when I call him and tell him not to do it, I'm
Wasting your breath.
I'm greeted with hostility and foul language. And told that he will keep doing it as long as he wants to do it.
Good thing we're gonna get that municipal.
So we need some language in our sign.
We need Elizabeth's code for signage.
Saying.
I can look at that and bring that back.
That would be good, thank you.
He forgot. Okay.
Just so I'm clear. To amend or get a variance from the sign code, it can go to the Planning Commission, it doesn't need to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Right, now we're clear on what the distinction is between Board of Adjustment and planning.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
No.
The last section is commercial mobile home, mobile radio service, mobile home, I might vocabulary, but I propose deleting this unless someone has an objection, so under definitions, we have these definitions now in our definition section of our zoning code. So that is already in there.
So get rid of it.
Yeah.
I don't think we need this unless somebody knows something need these, it seems like they're antiquated.
Well, if we've already moved them into the definition section, then it's redundant.
I mean, it's just a way to regulate them. If we wanna. Mobile radio, what, I mean, what is a mobile radio, you guys, like, is that before we had mobile homes? I mean, mobile phones, like when we used to have those, you know?
Things on this last section of commercial mobile radio.
So it's, turn the page, there you go.
The green.
Which is right outside of.
Okay, so we had Brent come in one time and get a permit to take down a tower up on our property by the water tower. Our property, it's that town property, but it is annexed in town. They had to get a, a permit from us to remove one tower and put another tower up. And that's the part of the code that was applicable to them doing that.
So then we need to leave it.
Because there is a tower up there.
Yeah.
Do we get paid for that?
I don't see what, I mean.
No.
Well, do we?
And I found out that franchise agreements. Ruth, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is from an old attorney. Franchise agreements are only sought if there's a certain particular number of customers within that municipality that they are serving. If they are not serving at that or more, then they don't have to enter into a franchise agreement with us.
So that numbers two?
Probably. I got rid of Brent years ago.
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But do, do we have these definitions in the other section?
We do, but we don't have all these requirements, so I don't know, what is? I, I mean, I can read the definition, I just seems like C M R S.
We should find out what that is before we.
Facility is like. Big problem now is towers, right?
Right, yeah.
There is a definition for commercial mobile radio service facility in the code.
Yeah.
You know, this could be applicable to the police department too.
Yep.
Because they utilize a commercial radio service for all of their police radios. And they have tower outside the police department that.
All the town code.
So that's applicable to police department and the fire department.
And we're gonna have to leave it there. Okay, I think it has to stay.
It has to stay because it's regulated by the FCC. Now, whether we should update it? I'm reading the review on the federal regs. I mean, I think that if we add language like as amended, um, we'd probably cover the town instead of rewriting or updating this, the whole provision. Does that make sense, so?
Yep, yes.
We just add language that says, or as amended by the code of federal regulations.
For this. Thank you. We're bringing, I think we're done.
Yeah. I can work on it right now. So when is our next meeting?
Then we stay as said, so we're not trying to make up a bunch of meetings.
Right.
Deadline.
So two weeks, next, next week is one week, so technically next week is the first week.
Because this was.
Yeah, this, yeah, this one's got off a week, so.
But we need to make a proposal. So we are looking at having a planning meeting on the twenty-ninth of November.
Yes, so that, that is one thing that you guys think is aware of. Well, no, no. Um, we need to have a planning meeting set on the twenty-ninth of November because we have a planning and zoning issue that is coming up and it is date sensitive. And so it needs to be able to go before this board on the, right before it goes to the town board, but to get in that fifteen-day
Notification.
Notification window, we have to put notification out on the sixth to be in the paper for like the ninth, which would give us the fifteen days to get to the twenty-ninth for you guys to hear it, so then if you guys approve it, it can go to the board. So.
Twenty-second, the twenty-third is Thanksgiving, right?
No, this one does not. Right.
Run through that.
Right.
We can limit that third meeting to just the topic.
Now, yes, the twenty-ninth could be limited to just that issue. Let's do that. We can still do our two meetings, the first.
As long as you guys are good with that.
Yeah, we just didn't want you to be over meeting.
Because I know the board is looking at, we've got board members here that are looking at the both three meetings, the board meeting, you know, so, and, and holiday.
Yes.
Too.
Yes.
So we're moving into that holiday, November, December.
So if you guys do those couple meetings, so, I mean, we could meet on the first. And then what's.
I'm gonna let you know, on the first, I have a whole lot of corporate coming in, I'm not going to be worth.
Okay.
Assault on.
Now that we have a second chair.
Yeah.
But the other option is to have one on the eighth, have one on the twenty-ninth, and on the twenty-ninth, we do that short little thing and then spend it, and that way the town board members are not all, I mean.
Right.
Spending all their time here.
Right.
You know, they want to have a life too.
But are we gonna stay on top of topic to get done with all of this by our deadline? If we are.
We're still gonna have two meetings.
Still having two meetings, making the deadline, I couldn't even report to the board at that December meeting.
Right, so the, the issue that's coming forward, you should I think be pretty simple. But, and it shouldn't take lots of time.
Okay.
Um, because we will make it as clear as Crystal, yeah. Yes, we put a lot of work into it, so, but we do have a deadline to meet.
Okay.
To get it in, and so, yes, so we have to have, we really need to have you meet on the twenty-ninth? So it is up to you then, how many other times you want to do this.
Rick, Trevor, and Andrew, you guys have an opinion on the two versus three meetings in November?
Like, every year, we're good.
I have a preference. Trevor can be here.
Doesn't matter.
Hey, I'm sorry, Trevor can be here at eight.
Okay.
But as long as we have, we're okay.
Yeah, we have.
Terry or Rick or.
Yeah, okay, so it is really up to the board to make a decision if you want to have two or three.
So you have the option of first fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, or the eighth and the twenty-ninth?
I propose we have meetings November eighth and November twenty-ninth.
I second that motion.
That a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
All those, the eighth and the twenty-ninth, all those in favor of those two days, say aye.
It was. So it was Julie and Sandy?
Okay, thank you. Eighth and twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
And do we want to look at just somebody yet?
Or Chris is second, do they?
You guys are on the board, I want to be crunching in things.
Yeah, you guys are on the.
I know.
Fourteenth of November.
And there's not that many.
Yeah, so.
Fanning will be on the eighty more left.
Got things that we have to fix that we have to fix tonight, so hopefully invite.
K W W A and the.
And we're gonna get that fixed somewhere.
Okay.
We're putting.
Cause there's.
Yes, because, yeah, then the fourteen.
So we're, we're getting some of them cleared.
Yes, because it's the, the deadline is up.
Okay.
Uh, soon, oh. Yeah, soon. It's soon.
So the weekend. Your meeting.
Yeah.
So I think, I have to confirm that with the law.
Yeah, because because then you'll be, the next board will be.
Well, let's, let's make sure, Ruth, is there anything else that you need from us?
No, I don't think so. So, but the, the town meeting, just to print my schedule is the board of trustees meeting's still on the fourteenth of November, right?
Yes, correct.
Yep, okay.
What'd you want, Rick?
What'd you need, Rick?
We're good.
Okay.
All good in the hood.
All right.
Just counting how many nights he's not gonna be home.
Now I move, will you turn?
Eight o'clock.
Thanks, everybody, I know it was tough for us.
So, so we're so adjourned?